All right, we are ready to get started here.
And Mayor Council, we do have Senator Coleman on the web.
Okay, so Senator Coleman and Representative Nash are virtually joining us. Terrific. All right, let's call this meeting. Are we all ready? Awesome. Good evening. It's now 5:02, and I call the Workshop of the Victoria City Council to order. Our workshops are informal, and this evening we do have a number of guests joining us both in person and online. So with that, let's go around the room and do introductions. I'm going to start over here. Let's start with Representative Bo. Why don't you come on up to the podium so we can hear you, and then we'll go from there.
Very good. State Representative Greg Bo, proud to represent all of Chaska, a good portion of Chenhassen, and a good portion of Victoria as well.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Udoman.
Matt Udoman, District 3, Carver County Commissioner, newly elected, representing Chaskin, Victoria, south of 5, north of downtown Chaskin, west of 41.
Terrific. We'll go, we'll do the introductions here in the room first, and then we'll go to the phones. I'm Deb McMillan. I'm the mayor of Victoria. Let's go over here to Councilmember Roberts.
I'm Chad Roberts, and I was newly elected council member in November.
Judy Black. I'm in my third year as council.
Derek Gunderson, first term, Victoria City Council.
Yep, go ahead.
Cindy Patton, city clerk.
Alyssa Swanson, Assistant to the City Manager.
Dana Hardy, City Manager.
Terrific. And then we also have online. Let's go to Senator Coleman.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hello, Julia Coleman, representing Senate District 47, which includes Representative Bo and Representative Nash's portions of the district. So really excited to be here to my first Victoria Council meeting.
Thank you.
Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Happy to be here. Jim Nash, District 47A, just entered my fourth term here in the legislature, and I serve geographically the largest part of Carver County, but I have Victoria P3 as part of my district. So happy to be here.
Great, terrific. Thank you very much, and welcome to all of you. We're delighted to have you here. So we have two items on our workshop agenda this evening. The first item is our legislative discussion. Assistant to the City Manager Alyssa Swanson coordinates the city's legislative platform. So with that, Ms. Swanson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council members, representatives this evening, and commissioners, thank you for attending. We are very, very fortunate to be able to go through this exercise with each and every one of you. Just a note, this is something or a process we do annually at the City of Victoria. Although we are starting a little late this year, it is still very important for us to do this at a public forum like we are. And it's also very important for us as staff and council, as once a session starts rolling and we start receiving more requests to do things like testify or give letters of support or opposition, this platform really helps us, well, come to the Capitol with one voice for the City of Victoria. Another thing to note is anything you see this evening is not set in stone. These priorities can be changed. Actually, we're looking forward to hearing your thoughts, receiving your feedback. So just to note, council, that anything you'd like to be changed, we will bring back to you at the February 22 City Council meeting. To get us rolling, I'll just do a brief session highlight of what's been going on at the Capitol. I'll start with November, the election that transpired, which resulted in we have two, or not two, sorry, 10 new state senators that are joining us. Seven of those are Democrats, three of those are Republican, and we're very fortunate to have one on the line, Senator Coleman. Again, thank you for participating in this discussion this evening, and congratulations on your most recent election. On the House side, out of those elected, 89% of them were incumbents. Out of the 23 newly elected, 11 of those were Republican, 12 of those were Democrat. And soon after the member elects took their oath of office, Governor Walz released his two-year $52.4 billion budget proposal. For the budget proposal, a majority of the revenue comes from taxes. That could be capital gains tax, corporate tax, income tax, tax on tobacco products, just to name a few. And you may have heard this budget being termed as the Minnesota COVID Relief Budget, and that's in part to a majority of expenses coming from, or going to, education, health and human services, and then 50 million being districted out towards small business relief. Now, the state, or the state senate and the House are both deliberating and revising the state budget, but we're all in anticipation for that February forecast that's anticipated to come out at the end of this month. Once that is released by the Minnesota Management and Budget Office, Governor Walz has an opportunity to revise his budget once more. Then it will go back to the Senate, go through the legislative process once again, and then it eventually will be revised and then approved by the legislature, go back to the governor to either be passed into laws, veto portions, or veto the complete budget. But the budget isn't the only thing on discussion during the session. There are other topics that may come up during 20, or the 2021 legislative session. There are election reform, healthcare affordability, job care, or job care, job reform, economic security, and that's just to name a few there. With COVID-19 advocacy, we do anticipate to be a little difficult this session, as it was in 2020. So we are going to rely on our relationship with our legislative delegation and our local elected officials. We also are part of two-member organizations, the League of Minnesota Cities, which represents all Minnesota cities at the Capitol, and then Metro Cities, which represents metropolitan cities at the Capitol. Those organizations, you know, they represent cities that are large, they represent cities that are small with different needs for their residents. So that's why it's important for us to have this discussion tonight. We really want to figure out and hone down on what's important for the residents of Victoria. So with that, Mayor, if you do not mind, what we were, while we were anticipating for tonight is to kind of give you a sneak peek on what we're deliberating to bring this platform to a digital age. And if you don't mind, I'll just share my screen.
Please do.
All right. One second.
Sure. And then I understand that Senator Coleman and Representative Nash will be able to see this as well, once we get this screen shared.
Correct.
Good, terrific. Looks like that was successful by every measure.
Awesome. That was easy. Let's hope the rest of the night goes this way.
Let's go.
So this might look familiar to you, council members, as this is the same platform we use for our strategic plan dashboard, My Sidewalk. My Sidewalk is a great tool. It brings in a lot of data into reports. So we're really excited to be able to use this platform for more than just our strategic dashboard. So with that, I'm just going to give a little highlight over each of these priorities, and then I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for discussion.
Very good.
So first on our list is effective delivery of local government services. This priority advocates that statutes do not limit the ability of local governments to effectively provide adequate services, and it supports legislation that provides tools and resources for cities to effectively and efficiently deliver services to the community. It is opposing unfunded mandates and supports revenue for unfunded mandates, or amending or repealing unfunded mandates where possible. It supports clear and timely notification regarding new legislation or modifications to legislation, scroll down a little bit, to allow for enough time for cities to fund and plan for funding for implementation. It supports the amending the open meeting law requirement to allow members of the public bodies, such as yourselves, to participate in meetings remotely without having to make the remote location open to the public. Minnesota cities and Victoria have proven this process to be successful and transparent during the COVID-19 pandemic, and we advocate that this becomes standard practice. Now, this request does not come strictly at the state and the federal level. We recognize and have identified ways to continue growing this effort locally, and with that, we propose as a city that we strive to rethink, redesign, and reinvent government services and programs to better fit the need of all Victoria residents for reasonable investment and cost. We will continue our efforts to engage residents from all backgrounds and interests, to remove barriers, and to determine what services are needed most, and we will continue to examine how delivery of city services can be modified to increase efficiency, transparency, and to lower costs. Priority two is maintain local control. Mayor, our city council members, our local elected officials are able to best respond to the needs of Victoria residences and businesses, and in that token should maintain sufficient authority and flexibility to meet the challenges of the local community, and have sufficient revenue sources available to provide adequate services and address local needs. In addition, this priority supports greater access to stable and reliable tax and government aid, as well as dedicated funding, such as local government aid or LGA. It supports, as I'll scroll down a second, it supports clear laws that provide municipal franchise authority. It supports legislation that gives cities greater authority and discretion as to what is allowed in the public right-of-way. It supports sufficient funding to cover the cost of state mandates, and it supports local authority to impose infrastructure fees so growth pays for growth. Priority three is transportation accessibility. This was not included in our 2020 priorities. However, with the upcoming future roadway projects, this is the 82nd Street improvements and the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan, we thought transportation was very important to bring to the table in 2021. And I would like to pause a moment to thank Representative Bo as being an author on the 82nd Street bonding request. Thank you. And also thank you to Carver County for heading up that initiative. We recognize through this priority that there is continued growth in Victoria and all of Carver County and in the region, which continues to put a strain on city transportation systems. Now, the city cost share of improvements to major state and county corridors is projected to be over $20 million. This is in addition to the $11 million over the next 10 years needed for local road improvements. With a $6 million levy in 2021, transportation represents a critical but significant budget pressure on our community. Specifically, Truck Highway 5, serving as our only east-west corridor in the city, faces significant traffic and safety concerns. So with that, we have proposed to support the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan study recommendations. We support capital bonds or alternative funding to improve 82nd Street, which would then function as a second east and west traffic relief valve for Highway 5, which could, incidentally, would be a safer route for our buses and our student drivers. We also propose to support municipal state aid system program funding to assist municipalities with construction and maintenance of municipal street systems, and support local regulatory authority of emerging and future transportation technologies, such as drones operating in the right-of-way. And this is where My Sidewalk gets to bring in those data collections. Here, you can see where we've pulled information on how, well, what the statistic is for residents commuting to work, and this is just a draft, of course, attracts traffic proximity by volume. Unfortunately, it's by kilometer, not mile. And then we can also link to the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan through this. Another new priority is housing for equity and inclusion. What this means is that as a city, we are eager to eliminate barriers by providing safe market rate and affordable homes for our residents and future residents of all stages of life and backgrounds. While a number of policy and financial tools exist to support both the preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing and the construction of new affordable housing, refinement and expansion of these tools is critical to address our community's housing need. Don't want to lock Kara out. Perfect. Welcome. Saved you a spot up front. So with that, through the housing equity and inclusion, our priority, we propose to support state statutes that provide city authority to regulate and set local ordinance for zoning, and to support local decision-making authority with regards to fees and regulations necessary to cover the cost of growth. To do our parts, the City of Victoria will continue to conduct periodical reviews of local requirements, land use regulation and ordinances, to ensure that they are consistent with development and growth, and we will continue to annually review our city fees as, to reflect the cost of doing business. The city will also, will continue to apply for affordable housing grants and other sources of funding, and will work with developers and residents to blend diverse housing types into new and existing neighborhoods to maximize choice for people of all economic backgrounds and social circumstances. And last but not least this evening is local government aid, or LGA. This was included in our 2020 platform. We do acknowledge that LGA helps cities maintain affordable places to live and work while meeting the needs of our residents, or residents and businesses. However, the last 17 years, Victoria has not received any LGA, and in the past 34 years, Victoria has received less than $300,000 of LGA funding. So with that, we support further examination of LGA formula to ensure that all metropolitan cities' needs are adequately addressed, and metropolitan city officials have the opportunity to provide input during those discussions. So with that, Mayor, Council, Representatives, and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to present our proposed 2021 legislative platform this evening. Again, we will revise based on tonight's discussion and bring back to you at the February 22 meeting.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Great overview, Alyssa. We appreciate it. All right. First and foremost, again, just a quick shout out again to Representative Bo for carrying that bonding request. 82nd Street is a major, major part of the puzzle to making sure that we can get around Carver County safely. So we want to say thank you to that, and we certainly encourage our other legislators to sign on to that legislation and help us get that passed as well. I see that we have, Commissioner Workman has joined us virtually. Commissioner, if you want to unmute yourself and introduce yourself briefly to the group, we'd appreciate that.
Hello there. Sorry, I was a little bit late there. I'm just listening. A lot of it is familiar, of course, 82nd Street. I thought Senator Coleman, you had put that in on the Senate side. I might be wrong. I try to keep track of those things, but.
No, you're correct, Commissioner. We're just a little backed up at the reviser's office, but that'll be introduced in the Senate shortly.
Wonderful. Thank you.
But good, good to be here. I've represented Victoria a long time, and I continue to enjoy
Terrific. Thank you so much. Legislators, any questions or feedback from the legislators regarding the legislative priorities and our platform for this year?
Madam Mayor.
Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one of your priorities was to allow for effectively remote hearings where the public is allowed to offer testimony. I do have a bill on that. My colleague and friend, longtime friend, Senator Benson, has it in the Senate. I would have every expectation that it's going to move forward and will likely be merged with a bill that Representative Elkins has to probably take the best of each part. But both for the legislature and then myself as a former mayor, my drive on that one is to effectively make it so that there's nothing different for the person at home from, if they were in the chambers with you there, or they were on a Zoom call, or in our case, a WebEx, that they would still have the ability to offer their thoughts. You know, when I was mayor, we had visitors petitions, correspondence, and we got a wide variety of input from people. And then we would also allow for people to weigh in on different things. That's the goal of the bill, is to make sure that folks have the ability to do that. And there is a well-known privacy organization called MCOG, that is supporting my bill. So I'm hopeful that we're able to do that. So would be, would be excited to make sure that if we have this persist, or as is probably likely to happen, meetings may have the ability to meet online or remotely moving forward, since people have become accustomed to it, and that we would afford the public the opportunity to weigh in remotely. So thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Other comments from our legislators? Senator Coleman?
Again, thank you so much for having me. I really appreciated being invited to participate in this. Like I said before, it's my first Victoria City Council meeting, so appreciate the presentation and, you know, try to stay in touch as much as you can. I'd love to have everyone in my office. It's a very weird year to be starting off in the state senate, but to echo, you know, Representative Nash's points in trying to make it so I'm still as accessible as I would be in any other situation. So I'm easily reached over my email, or I believe many of you have my cellphone number, which is also listed. So please stay in touch.
Terrific. Thank you. Representative Bo? We're going to ask Representative Bo to come up to the podium so we can hear him better.
I've always been told that I don't need a microphone, but I appreciate this. It makes it easier for folks at home to hear as well.
Indeed.
And so I would just want to echo what everyone else has already shared, which is, you know, a big thank you for being allowed and invited to attend tonight. It's a great opportunity for us to sit and listen and learn, to find out what issues are important to you. So that's, that's really, I think, the primary focus for me tonight. But certainly happy to be moving forward with the 82nd Street bill for funding, and as Senator Coleman has indicated, it's, it's in the reviser's office along with several other good ideas, and they have quite a backlog, as I understand it. But when those bills come out jacketed, then she will be carrying the Senate version, and, and we'll try to move that forward. 82nd Street, County Road 18, Lyman Boulevard is really a vital east-west arterial for Carver County, and, and I think it's very, very important to get that completed before we do a lot of work on Highway 5, so that it's there as a viable alternative for the detour for traffic, because it's going to be used as such whether it's ready or not. So we want to make sure that that's prepared and ready. We're also spending a lot of effort on Highway 212 and continuing improvements on Highway 212, and that impacts kind of all of us here in eastern Carver County, as well as a good portion of Minnesota. Having been on city council for many years before in our neighboring community of Chaska, I certainly understand LGA and the desire to see LGA being shared among all metro cities. I can also share heartaches of having the LGA rug pulled out from underneath several times, and suddenly having to scramble to find ways to fill those holes in the city budget and such. So we want to make sure that it's not only applied fairly, but also made available year after year, because to become used to it and then have it not be available when an allotment would occur, for example, if the state has a shortfall, that's a big challenge for cities. So we want to make sure that doesn't happen. And affordable housing, that's also a challenge that we have dealt with in a lot of the cities, and there is a need for that, and you want to have workforce housing for people in your community who serve in a variety of different jobs and different employment areas. And so those are challenges. We want to do it, and we want to do it right, and we want to make sure that it is sustainable and good quality housing stock, too, so.
Terrific. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. County Commissioners? Oh, Representative Nash, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and members. Again, I wanted to pick up on the conversation around LGA. You know, when we get the next budget forecast, it's going to likely be quite grim, and I think that cities need to be prepared for what may happen at, at the Capitol. And I've been asking actually every commissioner that comes into, not county commissioner, but commissioner for the governor's cabinet, when they come into state government finance, where I'm the minority lead, what will they do if the budget is reduced, and what will they do when their budget perhaps gets cut? And I just wanted to set the expectation that that is a distinct possibility for LGA, that there, there may be a significant formulaic reduction for LGA. And, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that we put that on your horizon, so that you are cognizant of that. You know, when I was mayor, and every day since then, I have encouraged people who are in that same role to never look at LGA as something that they can depend on for their budget, that it should be something that goes into the CIP plan, so that they, they can not have to rely on it budgetarily, because there have been a lot of horror stories of cities who plug it in as a reliable budget number, only to have the formula change, and that creates some considerable problems. Like Representative Bo, I am in favor of making sure that people have the ability to, to buy their home, to create what I call their, their true north, and, and have the ability to invest in their local community, and most, more than likely, the most significant capital investment that they'll ever make, and with the greatest rate of return. You know, that is one of the things that I have been working on at the Capitol for a number of years, and I will continue to do so to make sure that, that things are as, as fair as possible, to, to make sure that cities get what they need taken care of, and make sure that homeowners are also taken care of. So thanks again, Madam Mayor, and for those who might want to reach out regarding any issue, I do publish my cellphone and my email, so I'm happy to take calls or emails from the residents. and my email, so I'm happy to take calls or emails from the residents there in Victoria. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Terrific. Well, we appreciate you representing us down at the Capitol. We know that transportation is a big issue for us here. We want people to get here and we want people to get here safely. I've always said, people figure out great communities long before the Minnesota Department of Transportation knows they're here. So they always lag for several years behind us. So we want to, we want to make sure we get that shored up and, and get folks here safely. And, you know, just a, just a comment and a, and a compliment to the former councils from Victoria and the staff here. Victoria weathered the COVID pandemic quite reasonably well compared to a lot of our neighboring communities and other cities across the, across the state just because of our great financial policies and our, our kind of forward thinking. So a big shout out to those who came before us and kind of put that framework in place so that we could weather these uncertain times. And that's been really, it serves, it's served us well. Commissioners, any, any thoughts or comments from you? Commissioner Udoman, please.
Tom, you want to, Commissioner Workman, you want to say anything?
Commissioner Udoman is asking you if you want anything, if you have anything to say, Commissioner Workman. He's going to cede his, the floor to you and your seniority.
Boy, that's, that's awfully gracious. Madam Mayor, I'll echo what Representative Nash said about the local government aid. This is a year you're going to be glad you don't have local government aid because they're probably going to take it from you anyway. Carver County does get aid. We did, again, as Representative Nash said, we put it in our capital improvement plan. It's not money we count on. We appreciate it when we get it. It's been fairly steady as of late, but I see troubled waters ahead. So that can again affect our budget and everything we do in Carver County this year. So we got Lyndon Robgent always on the ball figuring out the balance sheet for the different highway construction projects everywhere. So that's about it.
Commissioner Udoman?
So graciously. I always wanted to defer to the seniority. I also want to acknowledge that Lyndon is in the room and kudos. One of the first meetings that I had before actually taking the OFA office was to jump in a car with Lyndon and we drove Highway 10, Highway 11, 82nd Street, and Highway 5. And we physically went out and looked at everything that was going on because those were a lot of the buzzwords, what's happening and what's not happening. Also had a chance to meet with Dana and the partnership and the conversations that we've had have been really valuable. You'll hear me often talk about the next 20 years will shape the next 200 years of Carver County and Victoria is right in the paramount of that. It's not lost on me that Victoria looks like what Chanhassen did 30 years ago with about 8,000 people. And Victoria will be the largest city in Carver County in the not-so-distant future. And I'm encouraged by not only the road projects, which I call physical infrastructure, but the social infrastructure as well when it comes to housing and other things. Also, part of that social fabric is broadband and it's not lost on us, the, the need for broadband, not only in the family system, but as our communities grow and the high density that will happen within Victoria and with Carver, to be able to get that broadband. And I know that you're looking in those things as well. Also, the reality of the demographic changing plays into that social infrastructure as well is our demographics in Carver County are very different than, than they were just 10 years ago and they will be even more different in the next 10 years. And so those are some of the areas where libraries, parks, trails, park connections, lakes, everything that plays right into the hand of Victoria are very important, as well as partnerships, not just with local government entities, but not-for-profits. And I just wanted to elevate one example, even within this community of Victoria, is Greg Pabot within the Humanity Alliance. If you haven't met Greg, it'd be a good opportunity to do so. They just purchased a property behind the Dairy Queen off of Highway 5. And some of the program that's, that they have planned for food stability, housing stability, and path to jobs are very important. And then also the impact of mental health in our community. We are the most affluent city or county in, in the state of Minnesota, but that doesn't mean that the needs of the mental health community are not hidden. They are very much here and we're excited of the opening of the mental health facility that is overlooking Bavaria that will serve local residents and beyond. And then also I know that you guys have reviewed the impact of the Southwest Transport Corridor and the importance of that. And just wanted to make the note that that is important to the growth, not only the physical infrastructure that'll come through town, but also what that means to the social infrastructure. Also wanted to call out that we have Sheriff Camerud here as well as Officer Wolin. So thank you for having us here. We appreciate the partnership and the effort for that partnership. Not every city does this and it's really important that we do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Udoman. All right. Council, comments from council?
Yes, I, I just wanted to thank you for all the things that you're, you've said that you're working on. I, I'd like to hear how, how you plan on achieving these things. We can all have topics, but there has to be groundwork laid so that we know how we're going to get there. I mean, like, like we said, we need, we're going to need $20 million. Where are we supposed to get that? How are we supposed to get that? We need affordable housing. How are we going to do that? Those are the types of things that I'm kind of looking for. It's like, how are we going to do that? Any, any ideas or you just, is this?
Well, if I could make a comment on behalf of Carver County.
Yeah.
I've only been in seat for 30 days.
Right.
Seeing the 10, 10 and 11 study that Lyndon and his team, Angie has done a fantastic job there and all the outreach efforts. I think there's no fewer than 500 people that have contributed efforts to what that would look like, including the city of Chaska, city of Victoria. And so those are tangible plans that we're just a link away from looking at that. And it was eye-opening to see 123-page document and all the details that go into it and all the considerations of roundabout or traffic signal. A similar study within the Arboretum Transportation Study with a lot of input from folks with the Minnewashta community with the Arboretum and otherwise. You drive down there and you're like, wow, when on a non-COVID year, the backup that goes on there, we worship at Westwood and you see some of the backup that comes through there. That's a real thing. And to talk to former council member, Tom, it's not Voight, Gregory, he said that Highway 5 is carrying double the traffic that it was, it was spaced to do. And you can see it when you drive through those things. So with Lyndon and his team and having those studies, that's the next step. And I was so encouraged when Bowe and Coleman are carrying a $10 million pact. That's a big question mark as to how do you get 82nd Street funded?
Yes.
It's not really in Chaska's plan for another 20 or 30 years because development would drive that. The Arboretum's probably not going to throw any money at it. City of Victoria doesn't have the money to throw at it. So this looks like the, the fun tidbit of that $10 million that opens up those two sources of funding. And if you would, I'm sure Lyndon could offer a few thoughts as well for, from dream to actual tactical delivery. And when we see those dates and those, you know, what's next, the two chunks of 212 and the dates are actually out there, the first chunk of 5 planned for 2025, that goes from pie in the sky, it's never going to happen, we haven't heard when it's going to happen, to put actual dates in there. And there's so many moving factors to it. But when you see those dates on paper from the plans that are coming through, those are really encouraging. So it's not just a pipe dream that we're used to seeing sometimes, it's actual things. And then I saw a slide also that Lyndon served up right when I first came into office and $28.5 million of committed funding over the course of the next five years. Those are big dollars right here in Carver County when you're, when you're competing, as you know, with the likes of Hennepin and other places and you've got a $2 billion light rail and that isn't where it's going to go. Every dollar that comes our way is just a huge effort in, in the way of Lyndon and his team. So if you want to say a few words, I've just been encouraged in the first 30 days.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Robgent, welcome.
Hi there, Madam Mayor, Council. Thanks for having me. Yeah, I wasn't expecting to say much, but what I can say is it's, you guys have been great partners over the years. We know the transportation challenges that we have and we've, we've tried to plan our way into a good solution. And I know tonight you're going to be talking about, Kara's going to give a presentation on the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan. Think about that, how important that is to this community. We've got a lot of work to do and I know Commissioner Udoman and I and Commissioner Workman will be visiting with you a lot in the next few years because we have a set of 20 projects in and around the area that need to be implemented in the next 20 years. Good news, you might say it's good news, might, might be bad news for some folks, is we do have a pretty significant revenue source with the local option sales tax that we prioritize a lot of projects with, which allows us to be very competitive with grant opportunities. So Commissioner Udoman mentioned that 28 million that we got from Met Council through the cycle every two years, there's a competitive cycle and we did very well. And I have to say, the reason for that is probably the planning work you do to come up with real projects, do the outreach, which is really important these days, and put a really competitive proposal together. And that's by far the, the most money we've been awarded since I've been at Carver County 11 years. So 212 is another big priority for the county where we've, we've gone after grants for many, many, many years and we've come up with small parts of money to the point where we're going to actually construct the first phase between Carver and Cologne this summer, which is pretty incredible. It's a county-led project, even though it's a state highway, just like Highway 5, it's a state highway, but we know that with MINDOT's financial situation, it's tough for them to come out here and do huge investment. So the county has taken the lead with your help. We understand there's a tremendous local strain on, on the, on the cost share. Hence, Representative Bowe with the, the bill for 82nd Street, we've recognized over many years, that's a budget buster for smaller communities. And so we need the state's help in order to reach that goal. So the county has, has committed our 13 million to, for our share of that project and we're seeking the 10 million from the legislature to fill that gap. And if we're successful, we'll make it happen, hopefully before 2025, which is our goal to get Highway 5 started. One of those grants we got from that 28 million was to expand Highway 5 from Rowland Acres Road to Minnewashta Parkway to Four Lane. So it'll improve the bottleneck at Rowland Acres Road. We all know there's, there's not enough capacity at that signal light, so we're going to fix that. So that's a 20, that's a real project in 2025. So we are moving forward. I know it's not easy and we, we do a lot of public outreach and again, we'll be visiting with you and the public many, many times between now and whenever these projects are implemented. But lots of, lots of challenges coming up, but in a good way, I think.
Yeah, thank you. I, there's nothing more apparent than planning for the future than transportation. We are planning for roads we may never live long enough to drive on and it's, it's so apparent, but it does take, it does take some long-term planning and long-term, and patience just to get there. So we're, thank you for your help and I would encourage all of us to continue to elevate our needs out here and keep this forefront. Representative Bowe?
Just wanted to say just a brief word and, and a reminder of how fortunate we are to live where we do. The partnerships here in Carver County are phenomenal between the cities and the county and the state. I think we work together very well, better than most other counties do. I mean, the prime example is 101 and the improvements going north over the river and creating a flood-proof or flood-resistant river crossing at 101. The state couldn't afford to do it, so Carver County really stepped forward and carried the, the majority of that cost. And then the state has reimbursed Carver County for that. That's a phenomenal thing that most counties would, would not consider doing. And now, you know, Carver County has, has really taken the lead on 212 and other, and Highway 5 as well. So we're fortunate to have a great partner in Carver County and, and a great willingness for the county to work with the cities and the state. And, and that helps us a lot to really be forward-thinking and to do things at a much faster schedule than we might be able to do otherwise. So I think we need to continue to make sure we have those partnerships in place and to collaborate and work well together. The other thought is affordable housing, you would ask? Yeah, that's a tough one as well. I mean, and there are things you can do to think outside the box, to, to maybe make lots slightly smaller by decreasing side yard setbacks and that maybe makes, drives the price point down a little bit and makes it a little more affordable. But there's, you know, looking for funding outside state and federal as well, but there are challenges and that's a big challenge. But I know on the council of Chaska, that's one of the things we did is tried to make the lots a little smaller and that would drive down the price. And that made it so that it was an affordable housing stock, but yet still something that the public wanted, so.
Terrific. Thank you, Representative.
But partners, that's the key.
Indeed. Thank you. Final comments on this from council? Councilman?
On?
On the, on the.
Mayor McMillan? I believe Representative Nash has his hand raised.
Yes. You have to be louder with your hand raising. Councilman Gunderson is going to cede to Representative Nash. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't want to barge in, but did want to point out also that while it's not in the target area of Victoria, all three of the legislators that are here this evening are either principal authors or second authors on a funding project for Highway 212. And while it feels a lot like Sisyphus pushing the rock uphill, I, I do believe we are getting very close to being able to get that done. I started that back when I first came into the legislature seven years ago and I, I think that we're close. I know that Senator Coleman has been talking with her transportation chair. I believe that is a hopeful priority for him as well. But I, I do believe that the more we push on this and the more support we get from the county, the better off we are. I do believe that what folks have been hearing from us and the trips that people have taken out here to Carver County to see just the, how dangerous that intersection is, that it's, it's got to happen soon because I talked to a lot of folks who drive 212 and they recognize that it is not a very safe highway in the, in the area that we're trying to get the funding for. And again, while it's not directly adjacent to you in the target area that we're, we're trying to solve, that the legislators here in the room are, are tackling that issue head-on.
Terrific. Thank you for that call-out. I appreciate it. Councilman Gunderson?
I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. I think coming off the Finance Committee, I wear it as a badge of honor that we don't get LGA and that we haven't had to depend on it as a community. So I think that speaks to our forward-thinking members of not only the councils, but our commissions and the input that they've had, impact they've had over the last 20 years. So with that said, the other thing, it astounds me every time I talk to, get into conversations with people and today and last week are no exception. I had the opportunity of being on a training with other local electeds with the LMC and I introduced who I was and where I was from and I had two other elected officials saying how much they love Victoria. And to me, that's amazing, right? I didn't, I didn't offer that about their communities. I, I said, "Thank you very much," right? So there's that. And then today, speaking with someone in, in another government agency, offered up how much he appreciated Victoria and loved to come out here. With that said, we wouldn't be here if we didn't have some of the controls that we have in place. We look the way we look. We have the ability to create our community the way we're creating our community. So it's great that we have that ability to do that and I look forward to continuing to make Victoria look and feel like the community. Everybody tells me that it is. And it's wonderful that we have the ability to do that right now. So I'm looking forward to working with all of our levels of government, from our commissioners to representatives, our senators, into the future to continue to help grow this community. You know, I think on average, it's 500 people a year. And that's, don't quote me on that, but it's got to be in that ballpark, some years, some years less, some years more. So the, the projects that we're talking about aren't just impacting the people here now. Like the mayor said, these are things we're not even going to see that we're getting to decide on. So I'm looking forward to the years ahead and, and hopefully we can, we can do, make this community and this county the best it can be.
Just have a couple of comments. First of all, thanks to Alyssa and the city staff for putting together, you know, this, these documents. So thank you for your hard work on, on this stuff. Thank you obviously to Representative Bowe and Senator Coleman for championing 82nd Street. It's obviously, as everyone said, it's important, right? We're going to be coming into construction on 5 soon and, and it's going to take some burden off of Highway 5. As Councilman Gunderson said, you know, we want, you know, we want to be able to see and, and influence how Victoria looks and feels. And, and part of that is, you know, making sure, you know, we have the authority and the, to, to do that. And I, I guess I just had a quick question for, I guess, Representative Nash. You know, you made some comments recently about, and if I understood correctly, wanting to limit or preempt city authority regarding zoning. And I guess I just wanted to get your, your, you know, if, did I misunderstand that or I just, I guess, wanted to get your thoughts on that and if you can explain that a little bit further.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember, you did indeed hear that incorrectly. I am not trying to take away the city's ability to run their city at all. So whomever told you that, you got, you got bad information. you that, you got bad information. What we're trying to do is to make sure that we are working with cities and that we have cities who are not realistically charging more for inspections and permits than is allowable. And in the rule, it says that it should be proportional. And we've seen various cities around the metro sometimes charging double or more than that and not being able to show their work as to how do they arrive at some of the fees that they levy when it comes to inspections and permits and fees like that. And, you know, I said this a couple of years ago, that I am very much in favor of local control, but I am not in favor of local out-of-control. And I think that it is important that we remember that people who move to wherever they happen to move to, whether it be Victoria, Waconia, or cities around the state, that the local government recognizes that it's important to be cognizant of the impact of overcharging on the various things that they have the ability to charge for. So no, Councilmember, I am not trying to strip away your ability to do as you were elected to do. That would be ludicrous. As again, a former City Councilmember and mayor myself, that is not what I said.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your, you know, your explanation and thank you. That's all I have.
Terrific. Any last thoughts? Seeing none, I want to say thanks to everybody for your input and your feedback this evening. Council adoption of our legislative platform for 2021 will happen at our next regular council meeting on February 22nd. So on behalf of our city council, I wanted to say thank you to our legislators and our commissioners for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us. We appreciate it very much and we welcome you to stay for our next agenda item, which is policing services in Victoria, if you so wish. So thank you very much. Sheriff Camerud, welcome this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We're gonna have you come up to the podium and the floor is yours, Sheriff.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you having me today. And I was a little bit concerned that, you know, they were all gonna just bolt on me soon as I got up here. It's very hurtful.
Everyone wants to hear about policing services. Trust me, we have a wide audience online that I'm sure is sitting on the edge of their chair for this, so.
Well, no, honestly, I appreciate being here tonight and having an opportunity to talk with you. We have some new faces on the council and I think it's important that you have a good understanding of how and why the police contracting works. And it circles back to the conversation you were just having about partnerships. And I think that is why this works well in Carver County. But one of the questions you're gonna get guaranteed is why doesn't Victoria have its own police department? And hopefully, I can shed some light on the history of contract policing here and why you, you know, you don't have one and why frankly, I don't think it's necessary to have one at this point. I mean, that's your decision to make, of course, but we'll get through all of that. So in 1968, 1966, somewhere in that window, Sheriff Les Melker kinda had this vision for Carver County that there would be one-stop policing. And that would be the county police. And so he set out about building this contracting model throughout the county. Now, of course, the city of Chaska had already had their own police department. And so he knew that was gonna be, you know, probably not gonna fly in Chaska, but certainly for the rest of the county, it was a pretty viable thing. Interestingly, a little bit of trivia, the city of Chaska's had a night watchman, their first cop since the late 1890s. So they've been having their own police department for quite some time. But the idea was to really have this full-time coordinated coverage addressing all concerns, from felonies down to quality of life sorts of complaints. The city mayors served as, he called them the law enforcement commissioners back then. And we do something similar today where we call it the sheriff's contracting committee. And your city manager sits on that committee and brings the city issues forward in that. Same model back then, there was a contract. You received fine revenue to offset some of those costs. And so we're still structurally very similar today. Fast forward to the mid-1970s, Sheriff Bill Shallow commissions an independent study to evaluate the costs, appropriation, staffing, all of those things that went into the contract. And one of the most notable comments from the consultant was, "Carver County Commissioners are providing law enforcement at the most cost-effective way possible by providing county-wide system." I think that's pretty significant, particularly back then when contract policing was really new and it was a new concept. I think it holds true today. But again, those are things that, you know, other people will evaluate. But what was really leading to that consultant in that study was the city of Chaska was suing the county and the sheriff based on police contracting rates. Now, in the mid-1970s, Chaska tax base provided about forty percent of the county's tax revenue. So they were a pretty big player in the county revenue game. And what they suspected and the audit concluded was that the county was not charging its contract cities enough money to capture the actual costs. And so they had been raising taxes on all county residents, including those in Chaska. So essentially, the city of Chaska was offsetting policing costs in all these other cities. And of course, Chaska wasn't up for that. They're saying, "We're already paying for our own police department. We have no interest in paying for police in Waconia," for example. So we get through that and they settle it out of court with kind of a phasian plan. But notably, the county agreed to capture actual costs going forward. And that actual cost is a phrase you'll still hear today. Commander Wollin will talk about it when he starts discussing contracts, when we get into the contract renewal piece. So things are going along swimmingly till the mid-1980s. So we made it a decade. Sheriff Jack Hendrickson requested an audit of the contracting system conducted by then-state auditor Arnie Carlson, who, again, it was a check to assure that costs associated with contracting were captured and not being subsidized by other municipalities or by townships who did not have that level of police service. And so the scope of the audit was cost allocation, determining base level versus contract level, and then the tracking of hours. And so here we are, this is mid-'70s, had the same conversation, mid-'80s, having the same conversation. And then, you know, we'll have it again, right? And so anyways, the recurring theme was equitable funding of the sheriff's office. And Arnie Carlson writes, "We recommend the county identify in detail the activities of the patrol division and classify each as a base-level service or contract-level service." Now, that is a really ridiculously tall order to sort that out because a lot of calls for service are not readily apparent what they are until you get there and start looking into it. And so that portion of the work was never, wasn't done then for quite some time. The two main points of that audit were that the county has to make a management decision to define base and contract-level services. And then we have to develop an equitable formula to capture actual costs. And now you're hearing actual costs again. In '87, then, we entered into a stipulation and agreement with the city of Chaska, which was a permanent injunction, whose permanence was temporary because it was eventually lifted. But where we had to provide data to them and prove to them that we were capturing actual costs for the police services we were providing elsewhere. And the order and the permanent judgment said that we had to require payment of the actual costs. We had to have an hourly rate that reflects best estimates. I mean, so there's a recognition that, you know, if you have an employee leave in the middle of the year and they were at this on the pay scale and you replace them with somebody down here, it's right, there's a recognition that it's an estimate. But the idea was to get as close as you could to the actual costs. Number of hours to be provided. And then we were restrained and enjoined from providing municipal police services in excess of those outlined in the contract. And that language is pretty significant. Fast forward to 2002. So in '87, in '86, rather, Arnie Carlson says, "You gotta figure out which are base level and which are contract-level services." Well, that work was never really done. They had just done this hourly model sort of thing and it worked and we reported to Chaska and got all that. Well, 2002, Sheriff Bud Olson looks back on that study and says, "Yeah, we have to sort this out. We're just gonna end up in litigation with our community partners again over the cost of policing." And so he hires a group called Maximus to come in and do the analysis. And they literally went through every call for service over, I don't know if it was a three-year period or two or whatever, but it was, you know, we do forty-some thousand calls a year. And so to look at each one, one at a time and categorize it as a base call or a contract call. And then they created this third category that they called the overlapping calls. And those are kinds of the ones where you don't know what they are till you get there, okay? And so, and I'll get to explaining to how all that plays out. But the base-level calls, base-level services from the sheriff's office are, we will provide 911 dispatching for all public safety in Carver County. Now, that's not statutorily required. The county board has concluded that that is in the best interests of all county taxpayers to have one dispatch center and dispatch for police, sheriff's office, fire departments. Ridgeview maintains their own dispatch service. You know, we work in tandem, but they really dispatch their own stuff. Sheriff is statutorily obligated to have a jail. We don't have to have our own jail, but I have to have a place to take inmates. Most counties build their own facilities. There's a couple of counties in outstate where they joined and built a joint facility as a cost-saving measure, which was a pretty good idea then. I have to do civil process, bailiff, crime scene, evidence and property, major crime investigative assistance. And basically, if you look at what the sheriff is required to do under the state statute, apprehend felons and keep the peace, all right? So keep in mind the felony piece because we'll talk about misdemeanors in a little bit. So, but because I'm responsible for doing apprehending felons, then it makes sense that as a base-level service, we provide major crime scene investigative services, right? Because those are mostly gonna be felonies. Predatory offenders, emergency call response. Emergency call response is all kinds of things. Could be, you know, a felony in progress or it could be a medical, you know, a heart. Well, the county board here again has decided that emergency calls, medicals, for example, we're gonna call those a base-level service because we have resources throughout the county deployed with training, with equipment. We can get there and provide, you know, medical aid. Violent persons, crime felonies, death investigations and missing persons. Those are all things that the sheriff does by statute. When we get to the contract-level things, those are really what I kinda call your quality of life sorts of things, things that communities deal with. It's going to be your blight, right? You have to have an enforcement arm if you're gonna have an ordinance that says you can't have junk cars piled up in your yard. Well, the sheriff is not statutorily required to do that. And so you have a choice. You could have a police department. You could contract with the sheriff's office like you do. You could contract with another existing agency. Or you could form up a joint powers agreement and partner with a bunch of other cities or one other city and create a police department of sorts. You see that in South Lake, Minnetonka, where it's Excelsior, Greenwood, Tonkapei, Shorewood. I think that's it. They all have a joint powers agreement to, all those cities create that. Anyways, other kinds of contract levels, animal complaints. That's a really common one in municipalities. It's dogs at large, barking dogs, loud parties. A lot of communities look for preventive patrols. And, you know, here again, that's all contract level. And, you know, the list goes on, but I think you get the idea of the types of calls they are. Then you have these overlapping calls, right? So like alarms are an example of an overlapping call. An alarm that is triggered because a burglary is in progress is a felony. And so the sheriff has a statutory obligation to investigate that. If the alarm is going off because the weather tripped it or because of homeowner error, well, the sheriff doesn't have an obligation to do that. That's, if you wanna provide that kind of policing service to your citizens, that's, that would be in the contract. But here again, you don't know what that is till you get there. And so some criminal investigations, as I said earlier, to remember, we do felonies as base-level service, but we do not have a statutory obligation to provide misdemeanor-level service investigations. So if a city wants to have misdemeanor investigations, then they have to have some mechanism to do that. Victoria chooses a contract. And, but here again, sometimes the difference between a misdemeanor and a felony, let's use property damage as an example, the difference between a misdemeanor property damage and a felony property damage is a dollar, right? If they set a dollar amount and you go over that a dollar amount, it's a felony. Well, here again, we wouldn't know until we got there and kinda looked at it. So that's where the overlapping calls are. And then we have some of those, like a driving complaint. Well, is that a contract-level call or is it a base-level service? Well, if you have somebody who's having a diabetic reaction, it's gonna come in on dispatch as a drunk driver. That's really, I don't wanna say it's a common call, but it's not a unique call, right? Well, that would be a medical emergency. But here again, you don't know till you get the car stopped and you make contact with the driver. So now we have those three things kinda sorted out. Well, we look at the data, we know that roughly a third of calls for service are base-level service. So of all of the calls that come into Victoria, a third of them, the sheriff would take care of those just because of statutory obligation. The majority of overlapping calls are found to be contract-level, right? So probably, you know, two-thirds, I mean, that's what's left, right, of the one-third that is guaranteed, Sheriff, it'll ebb and flow. But somewhere half or more are gonna be contract or that overlapping that turn out to be contract. So in any event, we took all of that information. In 2004 and 2005, we eliminated the hourly police contracting and went to this FTE model wherein you contract for a whole employee. And it's much like when we look at how we capture our actual costs, we have a cost for having an employee. And if the schedule is 2,184 hours, we know in that scenario, between vacations, sick leave, training days, things of that nature, you get about 1,800 hours worth of work. So Commander Wollin looks at all the call volume. He does all the data. He comes up with, and then he can map it out and tell you, based on your call load, all of this information, we know you need X number of deputies to do your thing. And that's how he arrives at the recommendations for you. What this has done, though, is it really simplified the, capturing the actual costs, right? The old mechanism had fractions of an FTE mixed in for the support personnel who've completed time sheets, some were in another division in the county. And it was really, we called it the Ragu formula because people would ask, "Well, that's in there. It's in there," right? And it was, everything was in there. Sheriff Olson, Bud Olson, that is, really simplified the... We, Sheriff Olson, Bud Olson, that is, really simplified the, the process in this FTE model. And it also created a lot more consistency for the cities, right? It also made it easier for us, this is where that partnership comes in, to staff because we would find cities, how do you staff when Victoria increased their contract by two hours a week? How do I hire somebody to work two hours a week? And, right, so it, it simplified all of that. In 2010, we stopped providing full-service policing in places that were non-contracted, which was mostly townships. Every city but for Chaska, who has their own police department, stuck with the contracting model. And so the townships do not get the same level of service as the city of Victoria does. They, we tell them, if they call on a barking dog in Lake Town Township, we refer them to the township supervisor. And then, I don't know what the township supervisor does, but that is their responsibility. So we kind of get to today here, and Commander Willeen provides staffing recommendation based on all of the data in the records management system. We have a mechanism where we like to provide, you know, we have an obligated time, unobligated time, and then this admin time, right? Because I have a cost, every employee I have, and every employee you have, has to answer their emails, they got to check voicemails, fill out a timesheet, attend the sexual harassment training, all of those things that every employee has to do. Well, we have that, and so we try to break that out. It's about a third of their time working. And then we know that about a third of their time is spent on going to calls for service in the city. Then we leave another third open for directed patrols. So let's say you have a problem with speeders on thus-andsuch street. Well, then that deputy could allocate that one-third of unobligated time to get after those local issues. Full disclosure, though, just to be transparent, there is some circular self-feeding kind of thing. So if you have this unobligated time and the person is alloc, you say, "Okay, we want you to go out and stop cars on County Road 11 because we got a lot of speeders and it's really dangerous with the crosswalks near the church and such." Okay. Well, the deputy will make a bunch of traffic stops. That codes as obligated time, right? So it, it raises your obligated time a little bit. It's, it's not a significant number, but I didn't want people to think that we're trying to pull a fast one when, when people drill into the data on it. And, and so that is how we get to how many employees you need. And then we have a mechanism for calculating what the employee costs are. And what that amounts to is roughly, we had 30 employees in contracted assignments last year, just to illustrate the point. We average what their costs were, and then that becomes your rate for the next year. So we're always looking back a year. We actually look back two years ago because that's the most accurate data. We do not look at what our cost was for general patrol. They're not in the mix. It's only those who were in the contract pool that, that we use to calculate our costs. This year, we simplified the contract a little bit. We used to have this